Carry it over to July, it's okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the question about, I think we had no tax in process.
Um, no. You wanted to add the road aid conversation, the road aid conversation, the resolution for the road aid. It's on the agenda.
Okay.
Came out of nowhere.
I didn't even remember.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, it just came up recently.
Yes, it did not come out of nowhere, this just showed up in my inbox. It's a resolution that needs to be adopted. You all are familiar with the way road aid works, we get road aid, I think, three times a year?
Yes.
And as a part of that, they, the Frankfurt asks if we want to retain 3% for emergency use. Now, we've, I think we've used that once that I can remember.
Yeah, they've been our state of emergencies and stuff.
They do, but they also made us aware, when we're working on Oakwood, that if we needed to adjust that sum, that we might have, be able to dip into that 3% fund, which is safe life. So I think it's worthwhile for us to anticipate that, you don't have to. But I think it is because if we needed the money, that would be a way of getting it to perhaps complete something that we didn't have to go into our own budget for. So, the reason I'm saying all this is because I need a resolution from you to adopting and approving the execution of the municipal aid co- it's the municipal aid cooperative program contract between the city of Cretin and the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Department of Rural and Municipal Aid for just for your convenience, I won't say that twice quickly and see if I can. All right, so anyway, it's a resolution that allows, basically it's two pages, but it allows us to participate in the 3%. So, if you want to look at it, I have a copy of it, but I'll need a motion to approve, a res- a motion to approve the resolution to enter into the cooperative agreement.
That's the same agreement as we got them last year in the report?
It is.
It is.
We've done it many, many times, but it just showed up for this week for some reason. Sorry, Marshall?
The values we're in, by the way, it stands up, about 70,000 last year, about 77 this year, total, minus 3%.
Motion for Danny, second, second for Todd, any discussion on that? Those in favor, again, up raise your right hand, thank you, the motion carries. I will execute the municipal road aid cooperative program agreement, which allows us to do that. If we get this thing passed, and I guess I mean pass this around, the same one we made, I'll just ask everybody to sign it while we're here. They'll just sign it on the back and pass it to the next person who didn't. Just back in the next year.
Thank you.
Uh, now, while you're signing off, and I'll, I'll, buddy, with this, you had a question on the tax and process DMS. Joe, what was it you were talking about?
Okay, let me, so there was an email circulating to some or all of it about communications between Cretin and, uh, the fiscal corps, Tabitha Clemmons, uh, the attorneys. And admittedly, when I read it the other night, I didn't understand it with a fresh cup of coffee, I think I did. But maybe, could we simply state what it is?
Okay, in the, in the past, Cretin and each of those cities that you named, and county, have entered into a contract relating to the emergency ambulance service. This year, it's a bit different in my opinion, because we now have a, uh, an ang- an emergency ambulance service member this year as the representative. He was not put into that process, I don't know why, but he wasn't. But anyway, I've asked that he be included, he has now been included. I don't, I can't answer you as to what it's going to wind up looking like this year, because in my opinion, they should be dealing with him, and I've made that known to them, uh, they should be dealing with him on behalf of the city of Cretin. The riders here, they'll need to take this back to the county as well. It may be that Cretin will need to become a part of that for the purpose of funding some portion. We know, we know, we anticipate we're going to have tax receipts from the real property. We know we will not have tax receipts from the personaly this year, we won't have that until the beginning of next year, and then that will come in time to time, and also need to work with the sheriff some, because clerk has made me aware that there's something that's going to have to be done with this computer system to be able to collect this. Is that, have you been, have you been reading on all this?
It's my understanding that this will go on the Cretin property tax.
The real property will.
Yes.
But the town, but clerk has indicated that there's a necessity that you be brought in on the personaly part. Now, I'm not really sure why all that is, I'm anticipating that Lee is going to find all this out, and he's going to be dealing with you and with the county judge and the other entities involved, including Cretin. And then we will see how much funding we need, we need the city of Cretin, to get into this. We're anticipating we'll be able to get into it this year and back out as time goes on and that the, the district.
For a point of clarification, see if I understand this correctly, and I understand what you said so far. From a timing standpoint, it's not going to happen with property tax bills and Eli, it's not going to happen with Tabitha Clemmons. If it's going to happen quickly, we're going to have to do it with the city of Crif- Cretin for the real, for the real estate.
Not necessarily. Because it'll be, Lee, you want to, you've, you've done this before as well, you want to address something on this?
Okay, we've already, let me, folks, I've COVIDed, I got my shots, so, I gotta take this off for a minute. Okay, so basically after talking with Ms. Clemmons, what we were able to figure out is that, again, the problem lies in the tangible property, boats, bikes, cars, et cetera. All of that has to be preset, because as of January 1, those taxes are due. So when this ordinance was passed, we were already past the deadline of which to put the tax beyond that. Now, we've already been in contact with the clerk, and Ms. Clemmons has the point of contact for the taxing district. She will be sending me a email, at which point we are to apply the rate of which we will be putting a tax on the property.
Real property.
The real property. That will go out with the tax bills in October. So we'll be receiving money on the real property in October. However, it will not be until September that we will start looking at appraising the tax on the tangible property. So we will not have an actual on what it will bring in till toward the end of June of next year. At that time, we will have an estimate of what the total, uh, the total tax will bring in.
Well, we're going to know at least an estimate of what the real property is going to bring in, in this tax year.
Yes, sir.
So Cretin's going to need to participate.
Right.
At least for this year, from a funding standpoint. But they also need to see how much this is going, the district's going to be able to contribute before we know it.
Okay, for this year, that methodology would be on the Cretin tax bill, though, versus the county?
It will be on the, it will be on the Cretin tax bill.
It will be only for the properties that are within the city limits of Cretin.
Right, right, right.
Because there, this tax does not affect anybody outside of the city of Cretin.
Right, so I was interested in this year, and that will be a manual process?
Yep, yes.
Okay, got it.
And it'll be, it'll be an additional accounting function as well, because we'll be pulling in, say, I use Todd to tell people, say Todd pays 100 bucks in, in property taxes, we'll pay initial $10 for his EMS tax on the same bill. I'll get 110 dollars from Todd, I have to break out the 10 bucks to the district, keep 100 dollars to the city. So, it's just going to be a process, and I think this is even more push, that we get automated and understand more about taking cards online and allowing the, the big boys to do escrow, to do it all in one electronic movement, that kind of stuff, so we'll.
And actually, the way this is developing is advantageous. Because instead of having everything coming in all at once, which will take a lot of accounting work to separate the tangible versus the real, now we're stair stepping it as we go. We fully will not get a, a true picture of how much this will bring in till around June, July of next year.
Thank you, this was very helpful. Well, it was for everybody else, because there's some clarification here.
Well, finally clarification, do you think?
Sheriff, what do you have?
Yes, sir.
One question, sorry, so, when we talk taxes, we talk real estate, we talk motor vehicle, but real estate has two categories. You have real property and you have personal property, personal property is mobile homes. It's real estate, but it's considered personal property. Then you have the motor vehicle, boats, cars, trains, planes, whatever. Is it going to be real property and personal property involved in the tax bills this year?
It will be real and personal.
Okay, got it. And intangible will be separate?
Right, now, right now, there is, uh, well, it's not coming out of the house, but there is a definition that is potentially coming from the Frankfurt on the tangible property. So we'll have to pay attention on that. But right now, it's not making its way out of committee, so we're moving forward as if tangible property is defined as it has been in the last three years.
Sheriff, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify, my involvement would be none, um, unless, because I don't collect any city taxes in Grand County. Now, KRS does allow me to collect that for a fee, but since you already have the collection in place, it would be crazy to pay me out of that money you're collecting, so that's going to become less money. So basically, the, the real property and the personal property that Eli can work with Sean to start collecting October of this year is good, it's the ad valorem that Tabitha collects that it would have had to have been done last year to collect it for 2021. So I just want to clear that up, I don't need to be involved unless you all want to pay me, or negotiate somewhere between.
But, but you, you're in on the email process, and the clerk wanted to make sure that you were involved.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure that you're aware of this, and you deal with the clerk with that as well.
Yes, and I've told Sean too, I've given him some tips on collections, and anytime he needs me, he can call me, and I can, I can make your whole system better, we got, we're probably going to have close to a 99% rate, and we've never had that collections this year. And I, I credit that to online, mortgage companies letting them ACH, and, and just having, having it available electronically, so.
And you got one of our managers sitting over here, sitting with his sister, sitting in this whole taxing process.
There you go.
And if you wouldn't, Mayor, just to verify with Brian, uh, I understood the, that he was not going to have to be involved, but he is one of the listed persons that I'm coming to going to help.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I'll be involved.
I'm looking at definitions to come from Frankfurt that will make sure that we got this ironclad, and then start going to people and going, here's what we got, here's what we're intending to do. Let's make sure all the loopholes are closed and the dots are on the t's. So, with that said, you know.
More than happy to help, I just, I just didn't want you all to think I would be collecting, because I'm required to charge a fee. And I don't, I want you all to have as much money as you can have, so.
As long as I can carry a firearm like Brian does, I'm good shit. That's the way I camp, so it's.
Anything else, sir?
No, thanks a lot.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
What are we going to proceed with getting Sean full-time, part-time coverage for the, we still want to do that?
Michelle, uh, I thought we did that. Michelle's already part-time, yes, we already said it.
Oh, we did that, we did do that, I missed that.
The full-time help is interesting, but the part-time I think is a problem.
No, we just did part-time. You know, full-time, part-time, just originally, she'd be going to be.
Oh, a short-term, long-term.
Termite.
Yes.
Termite half-time, part-time.
Yeah, I think she'd do a great job by splitting it, she worked together quite a bit, and she was well, so yeah, she's been, she's perfect.
Play that.
No, she's great.
She's done an excellent job, we get that. Okay, what was the next, I was trying to read out one handwriting, so that's a little bit.
Grant money?
30,000. Oh, the grant. Discussing about a budget. Yes, okay. Meeting. Go ahead.
Well, and Michelle is on that committee with me, so we would just like to ask that we can go ahead and appropriate. Because what, what's going to happen now, we put out the letters announcing, you know, that the grant is now available. And so, we put a deadline of April 30th to submit that application. So what we're planning to do, after we get those, all those applications in, April 30th, is this committee will come together, which is myself and Michelle, and then we've got three citizens on that committee. And we'll come together and look at those applications, and we'd like to be able to go ahead and say, we've got X number of dollars we can fund this spending, now we have to bring it to you guys, or to the full council at, at a meeting. So we hope to meet that first week, we're going to you all at the meeting, that's what we're hoping to do. And so people can go ahead and get started with their spring projects in, you know, for the unification of the city, of the Main Street.
We're going to need to move some money.
Yeah.
But with that, with that explanation, anyone have questions, sorry?
And I don't, I don't, I have no idea how many people are going to participate, but I, I think that's a, our committee came up, but that was a good round number to just kind of say.
A good start.
Has the, has the business across from D and D that had the drive-through put in it, have they come to talk to you about anything about fixing up that bakery?
Oh, I think, uh, yeah, and she's on the committee. But she's, she's not going to apply for any funds this year, but she, I think Jeff can speak to that, she is planning to rebuild.
She's just not going to rebuild it, she says she wants. Go ahead. See if you have something to show me.
I'd like to ask an opinion of the council, if you please. Now, this is a rejuvenation of Main Street, et cetera. One of the things that has been a project on my plate for years, and we just never have been able to get the money set aside for it, is put signage at, in the front parking lot of the fire department, announcing Cretin Fire Department, Cretin City Emergency Services. Because there are a lot of people that have lived in this area for quite some time, that don't know where the fire department is. And so to be able to do some form of signage, would it fall in the thought process with this?
I don't know that it would fall under the grant, but that might be something we could discuss separate.
Well, I, I really kind of hesitate.
Because we're building, so we.
Yeah, but I don't like asking for it. Actually, we stay within our allowance.
I know.
You all look pretty good to us.
I know you do, I think that's definitely something to consider, but right now, if we could just take a vote on this, or if y'all have any questions.
Any other questions?
Just so we, Michelle and I can.
You're basically seeking 30,000 at this point, just to get the program kicked off, and then we'll see how it works, and then bringing in, in July, on our original.
Right, right. Right, this is like a first round.
So the money's not going where it's wired. The money will go somewhere, the money will go somewhere, it's 30,000.
This goes till the end of June.
Well, it, it would actually get paid out in, uh, they have 30 days to finish the project after they start, or after it's approved. So I expect the payments would be like early June. So it would be in this fiscal year that the payments would be made. But, but we don't even know how many people are going to participate or anything, so.
However, you can control it, I said, approving what you have money to do.
Yeah.
And you're saying you would, your cap would be 30,000.
Yeah, yeah, for now, and then we'll see how it develops. I, I do know a couple of people have expressed interest, and it's really exciting.
One lady came in today and saw, I have possession, so there has been an interest.
Will this be a, will this be a cap, or?
Uh, this is just.
It's possibly, you might need more the whole June?
Oh, uh, no, we wouldn't need any more before June.
Well, if she did, she would need to come back to the council.
Yeah, I'd have to come back.
This, this is, as far as the council's concerned, if you put 30,000, that's also going to spend until it comes back here.
I'm just, there's a, there's a lot of people that would be eligible for this, I'm just wondering if that's enough.
Again, it should be something that we look at again in our next budget year, but we've only got two months.
So with this first initial set, you know, we're looking at first week of May, we're going to have our meeting the second Tuesday. You guys approve the applications that we present you with, they have 30 days to get it, uh, you know, to work on the project, then turn the receipts back in to us. So there's only two weeks or so that we're looking at a turnaround in June, unless somebody gets the project out really, really quick. I mean, you're talking two to four weeks that they could potentially be turning in the project and still be in this fiscal year. So I don't see, and there's no way we would end up even having enough time to have more than that for this fiscal year.
I'll make a motion for a road aid. Okay, motion to Todd to amend our budget to show a land item to fund the, the committee, I've forgotten.
Uh, the downtown in city of Cretin.
That one, uh, at the amount of 30,000 dollars, right, Todd? Excuse me, the amount of 30,000, right?
30,000.
Is it a second? Okay, second is up, further discussion. Ready to vote, those in favor then of the motion, raise your right hand, those opposed, same sign, thank you.
I have a question, can I ask?
Yeah, come on.
All right. Always forget when you all move on.
Let's see, the, I have another thing, interim city, oh, interim city worker, what was that about? I put that on the side.
Uh, wherever you have a word with, hold it.
Okay.
I don't, you have to be along.
Okay. So is there anything else that was to be added to the agenda on new business that I have not added?
Here's what I have to pull.
Moving into the old business, the Oakwood Drive Project savings, Joe, you give me updates, say anything, everybody?
I don't have much new to share, it's basically the same update as last month, you know, Logan McFurby's been approved, we approved the budget, but he hasn't really started on it because of other workload, despite some product by, by Sean. The other item that was important was getting the resolution on the easement, the mayor's reached out to Brandon's partner, Jack Cannon, to work with the law firm that represented the former owner that was, should have gotten the paperwork into Tabitha, but for whatever reason, didn't, and I hope it will.
Does he interrupt you on that, because you don't know this, it happened to Sean this afternoon, real late, just before he left. We got a call from Greg's.
Yeah, her name's Joanne, but a really sweet lady, Greg's sister, of all people, who actually worked with him on the title side.
He didn't know this, so.
Yeah, so Joanne worked with him on the title side, and then returned my phone call that I made probably about six weeks ago. So they're going through, they're closing up the business in Florence. Very sweet lady, very ready to help us, already jumped in, and has been making phone calls, and wrote an email to Mr. Edmondson to help out, finding your original event, and she's engaged now, which is great, so Joanne's been a huge help.
And she and I have been talking, and we think we'll be able to resolve this.
Without starting fresh?
Yes. Yes, we think we will. So anyway, I feel a lot better about it, about the prospect of that, so I do, let's interrupt you, but we'll head, I just want to bring that up, go, go Brandon.
Yeah.
And I, I have a, bring another thing up to you, so Melissa, I have a meeting with Logan Monday, I'm going to call him Monday, and he's going to come here probably next week, Todd, if you're available, he wants to look at the roadway going into Harvester, about perhaps designing that for a hump, or two, or whatever needs to be done there. I talked with the transportation cabinet, they say that they're not in favor of it, I'm going to tell you that, they are not. But they say if we have an engineer who will sign off on it, and I spoke with Logan, he wants to look at it, and he may or may not after he looks. But we'll see where that speed control part goes from there. And I'll bring up with him also the design on Oakwood when I talk to them again. So, we'll try to keep these moving as much as we can. Anything else, sir?
No.
Okay, uh, on the roads, Todd, anything?
Uh, the roads, I'm, I've got, I talked to Chuck Dills, who hooked me up with Steve Tatum, and he's going around looking at different addresses that we put out, I had him go down Eagle Drive, Eagle.
Right.
Eagle Creek, that's the route. Uh, we've got an issue going on down there where a, I mean, water runoff, not that we don't have enough problems, that's already. The water runoff on Eagle Creek is coming down the first hill when you go to the bottom, it's forcing the guy's driveway out. I was able to stick my head in a hole and look about six feet up the hill under his driveway. So apparently the pipe has broken, and it's flushing everything underneath his driveway. The hole is here, and right next to it is the catch basin that takes us across the street into their backyards and down, whatever worse way they've got going on down there. Steve Tatum, I looked at it, and Jim has talked to Brian Simpson.
Brian?
Brian Simpson?
Brian, thanks. Martin, is your gift, Brian?
Brian. And, uh, he's checking on some legal avenues to see if they can do it. Basically, we're going to sub it out to them, they'll invoice us, we'll pay them. I think it's going to be one, more cost effective, and two, because we all know where he's at, 9:5, Monday through Friday, it'll be easy to find up here at the water district, and I think we'll get a, a really good job for probably a third of what it would cost to bring in somebody else's street. But that's where we are on that one. I'm going to go ahead and take care of the firehouse while I'm on the other. We had the roof repaired, uh, I'm not going to ask on this budget, but make notes for the next one. That firehouse roof needs to be completely taken off. It's been, I haven't even talked to Chief about this one yet, because I didn't want to get him all wound up. It's been, whoever put the roof on last did a very sorry job. A lot of places, it's a metal roof, and you should screw the metal roof to the wood substructure. There's places where it's metal screwed into the next sheet of metal, and there's nothing holding any of it together. So it wouldn't be a good idea to heavy ice roof, roof your firehouse. But, but all the holes are passed, the gutter's fixed, the ice guard's there. We fought three years with the repairs that Brian did. The lighting upgrade, I'm going to take that off the table. I called Duke, had them come up and repair the two floodlights that had it dark during nine, 10, nine, 10 years on hold. And I think there's a sufficient amount of parking lot light now. I don't want to make it stadium bright at midnight for the residents living across the street. But I would like to pull some of that, thought and idea, since we're not going to upgrade the firehouse with any more lighting. This building really needs some outdoor lighting at night, this place is just black. Just my suggestion, and that's all that.
Todd, on your road, uh, in the pin hook on the left-hand side of the cul-de-sac, I was contacted by a lady a couple of weeks ago. There's two sections of the cul-de-sac down there that is sunk eight to 10 inches.
Yes.
Um, she said she contacted the city last year, uh, JD came out and put some cones around it, said they were going to be back to fix it. JD came back and got the cones, it's never been fixed.
Yeah, I, I believe it's the same woman, is there two sections red dead in front of her house?
Yep, one's right in the middle of her driveway.
Uh, that's one of the projects I've got Steve Tatum working with.
Okay.
But that's going to be, I believe that's going to be the same situation as what I've got on Eagle.
Yeah, that road is sunk probably eight to 10 inches.
The piping runs on that long side of the road, and it's probably another war shell. That one's going to be a lot more expensive than Eagle Drive. Because it's, the pipe runs on his side of the street, right under his driveway, then the collection basin, and then it shoots across the street. The collection basin for pin hook is, I believe, about, I think it's the next house, but it circles in front of hers. So you got her driveway, a good 20 feet of roads you may have to come up with. And then you get the surprise of what's causing all of it. So it's a lot of, we don't know until we dig eight feet down to find the pipe. So there's, there's going to be some surprises coming to those.
But Steve is supposed to get back with you and let you know what we need to do, and we're going to do that.
Yeah.
Question on budget, are you looking to do some of this work this fiscal year? Because there's some budget lines that have been, have been utilized this year.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to, I'm trying to get at least one or two of these knocked down on one that we already have sitting. And that'll give me a good base idea of what I can expect for the next budget to ask for.
All right, anything else?
That's a lot of that.
Anything further, Jennifer, yes, you guys have something, Michelle?
Oh, I was just got an update about Duke with the lighting.
Oh, go ahead.
Forgot to have us add that. I, update from the email that I sent about the March 23rd, talked to Base Company, is the name of the group, through Duke Energy. And we finally had a work order, a, a number created, they're supposed to be sending out somebody in a few days to come out and look at these whole lot. They're supposed to be sending out somebody in a few days to come out and look at these pole lights. See where if it can be the like, the LED upgrades. And then get back with us. They've got my cell phone number. And depending on when it is, I may need to reach out to somebody else, if somebody else is local. I don't know how much more money they're going to give me, that they're going to be showing up. But I, I'll, if you guys, let me give you the work order number. Does anybody need any of that or I'll just. Yep, and I'll tell you what, it's under the lighting account, so I'll give you all that afterwards.
Will the upgrade cost us or did?
That's one of the things that we're, the question mark. So there is a program out there where they are in this grand old process of updating all the cities. Which we're a small little fish in a pond. So I'm trying to be the squeaky wheel that gets us moved up in that process. But they have to come out and investigate us first and see, are we even combat compatible to be switched over? Or are we talking about actually replacing the fixtures in order to upgrade the lighting? So, lot different situation.
Speaking of Duke, there's, we wrote a check a ways back for, put banners up. Do you ever recall that money coming back?
It never cleared. I asked if I could stop and check the Fort Bank back in the fall. It never, it never just came back to me though, it's clerk.
It was sent to them, but they didn't cash it?
Correct. And that conversation, this is a big, like, clever timeframe-ish. It's hard to get a hold of that person. And then he did call Kay back then, said to check if the vert up, it won't be cashed. I still went to Fort Bank, flash online. I just put a stop on that check itself. That was probably almost six months ago, so that check would actually no longer be valid over a hundred and eighty days anyway. So it's, it was never cleared, I think, for me.
Okay, anything else from the downtown development? Recycle.
I talked to Mr. Dalton and he understands that it would be nice to have, but he doesn't want us to drive on his property because of the weight of the vehicle, tall in it in front of where his dumpster is, is his driveway is already cracking where they garbage truck stops to pick up the trash there. I talked to Mayor Dr. Richard before this email came out and he said they pulled. Their recycle bin there for the pedal park because of trash being dumped there from the outside. From some of the clientele that would hang around there doing other things too and just trashing the recycle bin, so. Nice as it be nice to have unless we have to. I don't know what's going to be able to happen. It costs eighteen dollars for a three-month period approximately to have a recycle container at your, at your residence.